This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Roja?
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo? Ms. McDermott? Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willoughby?
Here.
Ms. Vogel?
Here.
Nine and eleven present.
All right, I have two proclamations. The first one is for Mr. Harold Green. Whereas we, the members of Loseran County Council, wish Mr. Harold Green congratulations on his upcoming retirement in June of 2023. Whereas Mr. Green has been employed by Loseran County since June of 1995 as a custodial worker. His service spans just short of 30 years with the county. And whereas Mr. Green can be found taking great care of our courthouse and greeting visitors, employees, staff, and council members with a smile. And whereas Mr. Green is the husband to his wife Gloria, the father to his son Harry, and a proud grandfather to his three grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Green's service to the county is appreciated and his warm, friendly demeanor will be greatly missed. Now therefore, we, the Loseran County Council, congratulate Harold Green on his retirement from Loseran County. We wish him good health and happiness as he moves on to a new chapter of his life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation for Teen Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas Teen Mental Health Awareness Day is designed to raise awareness that mental health is essential for teens. Mental health is a part of health, address the stigma, and increase awareness of mental health resources. And whereas according to the 2021 Pennsylvania Youth Survey, given to the middle and high school age students, an estimated 41.5% of youth in Loseran County reported feeling sad or depressed most days in the past 12 months. An estimated 30.5% of youth in Loseran County reported feeling so sad they stopped doing usual activities. And whereas according to the same data source, an estimated 17.8% of youth in Loseran County reported seriously considering suicide. An estimated 11.8% of youth in Loseran County reported attempting suicide. And whereas adolescence is a formative time for one's intellectual and emotional development, youth today are easily exposed to harmful stigma surrounding mental health through the daily conception of derogatory language and misleading media representation. And whereas being diagnosed with a mental health condition is not a weakness or something to be ashamed of, and it is important to recognize that anyone can experience poor mental well-being and deserves to be shown care and compassion to ensure comfort in reaching out for help. And whereas to combat stigma and encourage help-seeking, it is important to provide support and promote available mental health resources for youth of all identities and cultures. There was a key tool in reducing the stigma surrounding mental health and the significance of the mental health crisis in America is implementing mental health education in schools. And whereas there is currently no legislation that protects teens in Pennsylvania by enabling them to take school-excused mental health days, which would offer more avenues of rest and recovery. Whereas teens today face mounting societal pressures in school, the workplace, and in transition to college with limited supportive resources and guidance, thus resulting in increased anxiety and poor mental health. And whereas teens deserve to have a seat and influence at the decision-making table and be heard, respected, and elevated in decisions that impact them. Now therefore, be it resolved that Loseran County Council does hereby recognize the importance of teen mental health dialogue and policy and hereby declares May 23rd as Teen Mental Health Awareness Day in Loseran County.
I don't believe anybody is here in person for this proclamation, but we had correspondence from a Sarah Pessi, a policy associate, that reached out to us regarding this proclamation. And I believe Giovanna, Anna, and Katie are on, if you want to say a few words.
Hi, my name is Katie, and I'm a communications specialist with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation. I'm the sponsor and manager of the PA Youth Advocacy Network. On behalf of the foundation and the network, I'd like to thank you for the warm welcome and recognizing teen voice on Teen Mental Health Awareness Day with this proclamation that was written by teens from our PA Youth Advocacy Network. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Anna, who is from the network, so she can say a few words.
I'm Gwenee, I'm Anna Chong, and I'm from Wyoming Seminary. And I've been working in P U advocacy for nearly two years. And so given the statistics of your indicating mental health symptoms, we would really like to advocate for doing mental health as part of health as it is really imperative that we are paying closer attention to mental health amongst high school teens and allocating more resources to schools if needed. And since there's no legislation that grants students to create a mental health that breaks from what they come from in life, it would be really helpful to recognize mental health as an excuse absence for those who may not have access to resources or support, including a doctor. And a mental health day serves now only a day to stay healthy, like go off anxiety and stress, but also a step forward to make society better by treating mental health of equal importance. And we are really grateful to have the chance presenting in front of you today. And thank you for your time and recognizing similar health awareness day. I wish Charles important attention to mental health that teens are facing today. And J I is gonna talk more alongside with you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Giovanna Sella, and I also attend Wyoming Seminary. And I've been a part of the PA Youth Advocacy Network for about a year and a half now. And what Anna mentioned about mental health days, a big part of mental illness in youth is the stigma that along with it. Many people like Anna and I live in environments where mental health isn't talked about in our day-to-day lives. And even in some cases, it's treated negatively, like something to be ashamed of. This presents a situation where teens feel the need to hide, but they're thinking of for fear of standing out. However, hiding these feelings leads to a sort of snowball effect. If somebody isn't getting the help that they need, how are they supposed to get better? Those feelings can pile up and become overwhelming. That's exactly why it's important to aim to focus at the start and combat stigma by providing and promoting mental health resources to people, as well as educating those who might see mental health in a negative light. This shows that it's okay to not be okay, and it's normal to seek out help. Once again, thank you so much for having us tonight and helping us you educate about and establish our mental health needs.
Thank you. Thank you all for being on, we appreciate it. We have the proclamation here, if anybody would like to pick it up or if you want us to mail it, just communicate with Ms. Lawrence. Okay, we are moving on to any deletions from the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agendas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed? Agenda is adopted, we now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. The first slip I have is Mr. Griffin. Oh, Griffin, but Griffin can go.
Okay, all right, thank you. On the agenda item number one and two on your agenda for this evening is about the leases for the magistrate's offices. Thank you to council for addressing those issues that were in my audit. I appreciate that. Hopefully there'll be more to come. And we can tidy up that little bit of housekeeping that we need to do as council and as the courts need to get secure leases. It's pretty important that we have that stuff in place, and I appreciate the fact that council's voting on those tonight. And certainly encourage an affirmative vote for that. The other item I want to talk about is item number six is about the question on the ballot for the article for changing the board of elections. I sat at the board of elections meeting this weekend, well, since Friday, doing the adjudication as representative of the party. And I will tell you that that board has worked tirelessly over the last week, well, couple, three days or so, adjudicating that whole election process. I didn't see one member of council sitting at any of those meetings to see the work that that board does and the collaboration that they have to put together to get that task done. Yet we want to change the ordinance, we want to change the, by ordinance, we want to change the makeup and how it's appointed and lose some of that institutional knowledge. Council clearly has the power to put the questions on the ballot, no question about it. The concern that I have is that, you know, there's the question, the structure of the question is incorrect. There's many sections of that chart of that section 804 that's being changed. In fact, it's being changed to the point where the members of the board can change the members of the board, not by council, but by themselves. It says they serve at the pleasure of the board. That's truly not something that this council should approve. The board can remove their own members because they don't like somebody on the board, and then council has to appoint somebody in section D, if I understand that right. But the way questions should work, if you're going to put questions on the ballot, is each individual question has to go on the ballot on each individual topic. So you have to, if you want to change the charter, that's fine, but I think you should do it the right way so we don't end up getting sued on a question and costing the county taxpayers a lot of money in litigation when that question was on and somebody challenges it. So I just think that, first of all, I don't think it's necessary to make that change. I think if we want to change anything, it's maybe how the chairman's put on the board, who appoints the chair? Because according to our charter, the chair is appointed by the fifth member. If you wanted to change that, I think that probably wouldn't be a bad idea to give the board the ability to name their own chairperson. But the ability for us to change the terms and appointment of board members, you're going to lose an awful lot of institutional knowledge if you start moving them people around every two years. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it needs, and the other problem is where's the committee? The legislative committee should have sat down and discussed that. Your bylaws clearly say you have committees that are supposed to do that and bring them to council. We haven't had a single committee meeting to discuss any of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Griffin?
I'll pay us, thank you.
Okay, sure. David Stettler?
Thank you.
I'm from Hala Township, and so here we go again, another election, more problems. Hala ran out of Republican ballots, and the city's batteries need to be replaced. The judge of elections reported that did not have enough Republican ballots around 11:00 a.m., and it took over four hours for them to get ballots. When B R E showed up and asked Ms. Harvey what the problem was, she stated she followed Act 66. Act 66 requires at least 10% greater than the highest number of ballots in those odd primary years. Well, Hala only received 150 ballots. And if you take and add, the highest year was 212 in 2021, they should have had at least 232 ballots at that site for Republicans. 235 actually voted. Past elections may not be a good measure as well because, as we keep reading in the newspapers, Republicans keep adding to voter registration. Technician did show up with batteries eventually before the pad failed, which was good, but didn't bring any ballots. Approximately 3:15, the ballots arrived, and the comment was made that they had to go to other locations first. So Hala may not have been the only location because it took four hours and he was supposedly running at other locations with ballots. The W B R E reporter said, well, at least the problem's been resolved. No, the problem hasn't been resolved. I was here in November about this issue, and here we are again with not enough ballots to vote.
Yeah, this is on.
Well, I put it as a non-agenda item, I'm surprised you called me.
Oh, you had, you had both marked.
No, I didn't. I only marked one.
Okay, all right, you could finish your, you could finish at the end.
I'm sorry. I was surprised I was called. Okay. So anyway, bottom line, Act 66 was not followed. And when I was here in November, I said firing the county manager didn't make a lot of sense to me. And then the new acting manager should do something to fix this mess. And obviously, we've got a new manager now, county manager, they should fix this mess. But the bottom line is, nothing's been resolved. I used to work for a boss that said, either change the people or change the people. And at this point, nothing's changed in this county. We're still screwing up our elections, whether it's the ballots not having the right labels on them at the beginning, and the list is very long in this county. So again, who's responsible? I don't understand why the county council can't fix this mess, why the county managers don't fix this mess, but I don't understand why we still have problems every election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stettler. Ms. Hart?
Could I just answer that real quick?
Yeah.
Very quickly. Thanks for that last question.
Sure.
I and county council love to fix that mess six months. Just so you know, we don't have, we don't have that at all.
And that doesn't make sense.
And that's what the people wanted when they voted in home rule charter government.
I get that.
Yeah, people wanted, we had three commissioner systems, and the people, and probably rightfully so, thought that they held way too much power. They were on the election board, they made those decisions, they hired and fired people. We do none of that. We have no authority to do that. So I understand your frustration, it's mine as well. I wish I could do something.
You should be at the polling places when people are showing up and they can't vote.
I go there, and I see what's going on, but I can't fix it.
And one other point, real quick, for the record, Hala never received paper in November. They never got paper for the ballot.
I just wanted to let you know that.
Ms. Hartman?
Change the charter.
Hi, Elizabeth Hartman, Hannover Township. A couple items I think need to be tabled until our new county manager is in before we vote on stuff so that she has an input with everybody. I see Mr. Stetz is not here today. We're missing Leanne, we're missing John. Important things that are going to affect us in the future, like what Councilman Wolovich, is that how I pronounce it correctly? Is number six, like I think that's, we voted for home rule because we didn't want us to have all the power. This is taking the power back. This is going back to where we were before. So I'm looking forward to moving forward and fixing things. I went to children and youth, I bought pizza for all the workers. I've sat down with Katrina. I'm so excited for this county to start moving forward there. Let's get off elections and let's save the kids that are on the TV tonight saying we need mental health money. Where's their money? Where's the money to help the kids? Where's the money to help the elderly? But like, I'm against number six, and number three, I don't understand what the resolution is, so I'll have to listen to what you're talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Those are the only slips I have. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Anybody on the Zoom? If not, I have emails. Oh, Claudia Glennon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Claudia Glennon, Salem Township. And I'm, want to comment in agenda item number six, the proposal to change the charter. I'm in agreement with the previous speakers in saying I do not think this is something we should do. It seems like a blatant power grab by the county. And in contrary to the reason that home rule was established in the first place, which among other objectives was to decentralize power, cronyism, nepotism, fraud, waste, and abuse. And it also will make our election board extremely partisan when it should stay nonpartisan. And I believe, I'm not going to quote the individual specifically because I don't know what the exact words were, but to the effect, Mr. Wolovich had said, yes, when Democrats rule council, they'll be in charge. And when Republicans rule council, they'll be in charge. That is not what the election board should be about. It should be nonpartisan and must stay that way. And to shorten the terms, length of terms that individuals serve is just ludicrous when these are volunteers coming in with no previous election experience. And to get up to speed on everything, rules, regulations, laws, whether it's charter or state, is a lot of corporate knowledge that needs to be retained and not turned over every two years. So I strongly encourage the council to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, two people commented on number six at this point, and I will let Mr. Wolovich speak to it when we get to it. But I do just want, for the record, it's to place a question on the ballot whether or not we should do it. So it's not just us unilaterally deciding that we should do this or not. It will just be a question on the ballot if it were to pass. Just setting the record, neither here nor there, just. Yeah, just letting you guys know what that is. All right. Any other members of the public, anybody on the Zoom? If not, you'll have to bear with me reading emails. Okay. This one is from Carol Shearer from Butler Township. Dear members of Loseran County Council on your agenda this evening, May 23rd, 2023, is the introduction of an amendment to change the makeup of the Loseran County Election Board. As a 20-year resident of the county, I have questions about the timing and transparency of this introduction of amendment. As the county council is now overwhelmingly composed of one political party and not at all representative of the overall political makeup of Loseran County, this move is ill-advised. The current charter ensures the election board is nonpartisan, independent, as it should be. Membership split evenly between the two parties, independently electing a chair unable to serve as an elected county official. The proposal would dismiss the checks and balances in place by the current county charter, will once again promote cronyism and favoritism in the county, and would destroy the ability to retain institutional knowledge from election cycle to election cycle. Does the county council not retain valuable lessons from previous results of corruption and partisanship of the county? Council recently voted against the creation of a citizen commission, which would have been composed of elected members of the public, charged with studying and formulating recommended changes to the charter. Instead, there's an emergent effort to force changes onto the November ballot with no transparency or accountability. Council should spend its viable time working on issues that will affect and assist the citizens who elected you. Meaningful and lasting improvements to our roads and bridges, support for small businesses, high-paying jobs, and good safe schools for our kids. Sincerely, Carol Shearer. Next one, Jay Notar Tomoso, I'm probably butchering that, from West Wyoming. I would like my comment read before the voting session agenda. If you need more information, they put their phone number, I'm not going to say that out loud. I live in West Wyoming, and I've been a business owner in Wolfburg for 37 years. I'm writing about the continued meddling by Loseran County Council into the board of elections. It is glaringly apparent that Loseran County Council has had an unhealthy obsession with elections ever since Trump lost in 2020 and the rise of election denialism. We must keep the current balance of power and the nonpartisan makeup of the board of elections. The partisan attempts, not only locally but nationally, by far-right extremists are blatant attempts to destroy the integrity of elections and impose a biased Republican board onto the citizens of Loseran County. Continued power grabs and limiting their work to just focus on elected by a largely Republican county council has shown that they are not working on the issues that matter to the citizens. Their only goal seems to be figuring out ways to suppress democracy and voting integrity so they can negatively affect future elections. The citizens of Loseran County are not being represented by the current far-right extremists. We deserve better after the upcoming elections. Lisa Naperski, Fairview Township, council, I want to express my concerns about the proposed amendment to the charter related to the composition of our election board. If enacted, the proposed amendment will allow council to change the makeup of the board of elections, would certainly open the door to corruption. Now more than ever, we need to demonstrate to voters that those who oversee our county's elections are doing so in an independent and bipartisan manner. This is just another attempt by council to grab power away from our independent board of elections, similar to move last year where a council member inserted himself on the board in violation of the charter. Please keep our board of elections an independent body. It's no wonder that this proposal was drafted behind closed doors without public input. Okay, next one. Want to time me? Okay. Walter and Robin Cochran, Dallas Township. We'd like to remind council that according to its own Home Rule Charter, Section 1.04 Rights Reserved to the People, it expressly states, "No provision of the charter and no action by any Loseran County elective official or employee of Loseran County acting under its authority shall infringe upon the rights, privileges, and powers reserved or guaranteed to individual persons or to the people by the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania." This includes the right to vote under free and equal elections, none of which have been held in Loseran County the last several years. Some of you first campaigned on election integrity, yet when concerns were brought up to you that some voters were turned away and their vote not counted, the flip responses, what does it matter when the outcome didn't change? That statement alone indicates you either have no idea or concern for the Home Rule Charter and Loseran County voters. Likewise, Section 2.09 of the Charter on Powers and Duties also indicates that council can require the attendance of any county employee, any elective county official, or employee of his or her office, or any member or employee of any county authority, board, or commission at any meeting of county council, and to require they provide us reports and information as county council deems appropriate. Exactly how should the public interpret council's choice to do nothing to fix our bungled elections when you have the power all along, and particularly if you honor the Home Rule Charter? It's been over six months since the Bosch midterm elections last November, and we had yet another Bosch election last week by passing the buck to an already overwhelmed and understaffed DA who has been ineffective in getting to the bottom of the election problems. You have ignored the rights reserved to the people under your responsibilities in the Home Rule Charter. County employees work for us, the taxpayers, yet we are not getting the services we pay for. When will council address these issues and require DA, election board, and bureau personnel to attend this public meeting and respond to the people as to how the elections were and continue to be mismanaged? When we hold them accountable instead of facilitating and continuing the courthouse click cover-ups? Elections shall be free and equal, and no power, civil or military, shall at any time interfere to prevent the free exercise of the right of suffrage. This one doesn't have the town, but it's so short, I'll just read it. Travis Culver, this would make our current nonpartisan election board totally partisan and under the whims of county council. The independent citizen board, which created our charter, specifically established the parameters and structure of the border of elections, so this wouldn't happen. Oh, this is from, oh, that one's on agenda. We'll save that one for later. Any other members of the public on agenda items only? All right, if not, we'll move on. Do you want to announce the executive session attorney scheme?
We had an executive session before tonight's meeting and discussed four litigation matters. One regarding a former employee to another former employee who were employees back seven years ago when it started, and we discussed the resolution of that case, the pros and cons of the insurance capital. We discussed the resolution of the employment matter at prison. We discussed the resolution of the mental health matter, and we discussed the union contract with.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions opposed?
No.
Minutes are approved. Agenda item number one, motion to adopt resolution to renew lease with Kingston Township for Magisterial District Court 1139.
Second.
Roja. Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Vogel?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution to renew lease with Wright Township for Magisterial District Court 1136.
Second.
Roja. Mr. Mitchel? Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Ms. Vogel?
Yes.
No. Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving an amendment to an agreement with Loseran County Flood Protection Authority for the operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, and rehabilitation of Roaming Valley levee system.
Second.
I think it was Urban Wolovich. Is that okay?
Under question.
Yes.
What exactly are they asking?
Mr. Bellman explained it last time, or do you want to briefly?
It's just a limit, right? Limit to land.
No, it's a new, it's actually going to be a new agreement.
If we conduct our operations out of a 3200 square foot building, a long camera, made in 44. We've been using it for 25 years. It's, we've outgrown the space, and we need to expand it for our current and the future needs of the building. The building is located on county-owned land, so in order for us to expand the building, we need, that's why here is to add permission for council to use the.
You're building a garage, correct? That's what you mentioned before. Yes. It's more made, made, it's supposed to.
Yeah. It was made to go, we need to add additional base maintenance, lifts, you know, there's plans to wash vehicles, probably have to wash all of vehicles out. It's a little bit, you know, a little bit complex.
My question the last time.
Yes, sir.
Remember my question?
Yes, I do.
Would the flood protection authority retain a fee for that?
Well, in the entire history that we've been there, we've never, we've never received a bill, we've never.
That's not me asking. Since you're asking for consideration, I would like to ask if they retain a fee for the use of that.
We can't just have that.
As you know, I do report to the private board. I would have to pose that question to the board and see if they. I'm sure that they consider that.
I do think in light of. Like a request, we should get some kind of response.
Are trying to be no slant that we, that we all, that we already, that we store.
I'm fully aware of that, I might have been there a few times. But you're asking how to take over a property and add to it existing property, building. So that makes it different. It's different when it's just law land that we're using versus building something that would be, double what it is now, I don't know what the plans are.
It's such a double, yes.
So that's quite, that's a significant change. So that's quite, that's a significant change. So. I guess you want to make an amendment or do you want to consult with the board?
So would the board, I think so would the board.
Well, we don't, Mr. McGinley, I think you should make the amendment because we don't know if the majority of council would support that or not, like if that's.
My amendment would be that there would be some kind of fee associated with that based on some kind of appraisal. For the projected project.
Add a fee to be determined, is that okay?
By appraisal.
Be determined by appraisal. Add a fee to be determined by appraisal.
Fair and.
Okay.
You mean a one time fee or an annual fee?
I think it should be annual personally.
Wouldn't we just be driving up the levy fees to people?
Just gave them eight million dollars.
No, I understand that, but. It's to protect the county, you know.
I beg, I beg, I know.
No, I know, but I mean, it's just, it's going to get passed along, I think it's a viewpoint, but.
Well, I hope it's the fee is going to be as strong.
It's a trickle trickle down fee that everybody. Alright, we have an amendment to add a annual fee to be determined by an appraisal. Is there a second to his amendment?
Second.
Okay, roll call, just the amendment, just, just that amendment that Mr. McGinley made.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
No.
This vote, no.
Okay, amendment fails, can we have a roll call on the, the agreement as presented?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
This vote, yes.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you.
Number four, you too. Get out while you still can. Okay, number four, motion to introduce ordinance amending the twenty twenty three fiscal budget for Loser and County nine one one, that's the digital radio fun.
Second.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
This vote, yes.
Motion passes, number five, motion to adopt resolution committing a local match to federal and state capital assistance for the Loser and County Transportation Authority.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Number six, motion to introduce ordinance placing a question on the November seventh twenty twenty three general election about to amend article. Five, section eight oh four of the Loser and County Home Rule Charter, sorry.
So move second.
Roll call.
I just want to say real quick, in probably eighty ninety percent of counties and, or counties in Pennsylvania. County commissioners are the board of elections, they have a majority and a minority. It's prescribed, they are elected, they are selected by the people of their home counties. This would put more power on the council which are elected by the people of Loser and County to make these decisions. I encourage third party people, third party registrations, not affiliates, to apply for the fifth position on the election board. I'm not making this political, I'm trying to streamline the process, making it fair to the people of this county. Who for I don't know how many months were here arguing, throw them all out, throw them all out, that's not what I want to do. I want to encourage the people who are currently on the board to reapply to that position, everybody should have an equal chance to be on the board of elections. Like I said, I do want to encourage them to reapply, I do want to encourage third parties and not affiliated people to apply for this position. This isn't a power grab, this isn't because I'm an election conspiracy theorist, this is because I want to fix the charter. I ran saying that I wanted to make changes to the charter. And I am proposing this question, which will be voted on by the voters of the county. If you don't agree with it, I urge you to vote no. This will be up to the majority of voters in November to decide whether or not they want to go forward with this, this amendment, I'm not just going and grabbing power, I'm giving the power to people to decide. Is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? And I encourage you to do your research, look at the amendment, I'm sure the paper will be throwing out lots of information about it, I encourage you to read it and decide. Again, I prefer that the five members do choose their chair, so that way it's not the same person for four years. If they decide somebody else is more qualified to be the chair of the election board, they can make that decision every two years. If they want to keep their board member as their chair, that's fine, they can do that too. But I think it opens up free thinking, open mindedness on the board, so that way they don't feel constricted. And it gives fairness, a county council chooses their chair and vice chair every two years, I don't see why the election board can't do the same. And again, I know they said they're making it political because we are choosing a new member every two years. Well, the county commissioners are elected every four years. If people want to change, they voted two Republicans and one Democrat, two Democrats and one Republican, therefore the election board also changes. So I think at the end of the day, people elect council members to make these decisions. If they feel that way, then they should elect different council members. That's just how I'm going with this, I think, like I said, I encourage you to vote no if you don't agree. But at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the people of the county, it's not going to be up to us, I'm just proposing an idea. And I think that people should do their research and make their decisions then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, sorry.
The only thing is, I'm a little confused, section B in here where it says for those initially appointed under the terms of this amendment that started one member for each. Local parties receiving the highest and second highest member of votes cast. For the office of government in the most recent election, for that office shall be appointed to serve. You know, for a term of two years and one member for each of these local parties, served for four years, I mean. That continues to stagger, I understand the staggering, but it just sounds like it's conflicted in the way it's written.
What feature you want?
Mr. Sheen, is that how it originally looked? I mean, it almost sounds like the people are elected but then appointed, I mean, the way it's written, paragraph. Because that's the way council was elected.
Sorry, the election board was set up.
In the first year, two thousand twelve.
Right, but.
There were four members, two got two year terms, two got four year terms. They worked together for like the chair.
For reestablishing the election board, we'd have to do the same thing. And.
Yeah, I agree, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's the way it was set up by the charter.
Yeah, I mean, it's already set up, the point that you're going to basically throw, basically these, the current members are going to be exiting if this passes. Yes, you would start fresh, and you start fresh. The only other problem I have is I think when you start going to a two year term for the fifth member. In my mind, that's more of a structural change, you know, because it's not keeping four years across the board with all five members. You may think it's an administrative issue, but I think it's a, it's a structural change. It's a minute one, but it's still a structural change, which I think should still go government study commission. I think, you know, the better solution would have been to go to a GSC earlier with the fifth question and then fix the entire charter. In one big swoop with the study commission, but. You know, I like some parts of this, but I don't like other parts of it, that's just my opinion.
Okay, we have a.
Yeah, real quick. For those, first of all, again, to reiterate, Mr. Wilovich, what he said. Council here is not voting. To implement this change. To the charter right now. We're just voting to put the question on the ballot, so all the voters of Loser County could decide if this is a good idea. That needs to be reiterated, I think that's lost on a lot of those people who sent those emails to the chair tonight. Because they were. You know, by sending those emails, it sounded like they thought we were voting to do this tonight. We're voting to put it on the ballot tonight, that's all we're doing.
We're not even doing that tonight. We should introduce it, we should.
Introduce it in the future, like the. So it's just an introduction, secondly. For the cries that say it's a partisan move. People are shortsighted, I think they look at just the present right now. Who's going to be sitting here four years, five years, ten years from now? This gives council the ability, and I think the two year term for the chair is a great idea. Because if things are going deplorably wrong in the county. Why have someone there four years when it could be two years? On the other hand, if things are going great, that person could be reappointed every two years, that same person. This, this should not, one should not presume that if this passes and the voters pass it. That it's going to upend and change everybody on that board come January. If, if this council feels people are doing a great job there, they're going to reapply. And they probably would be reappointed, so the last thing I want to say is. For people that think this is introducing partisanship to the process. I've only been here sixteen months. And if people don't see the current. Chair operating in a partisan manner the past sixteen months where you haven't been paying attention, it is very partisan right now. And, and that's just right now, but that could be different four years from now, six years, eight years. And I just think it's a great idea.
My, my only comment really quickly is that. About the partisanship. Historically, people, citizens who apply to be on the election board are inherently partisan, right? Because whether they're Democrats or Republicans, or if they're showing an interest in being on the board, they're. Probably, most likely heavily engulfed in their, in their party. So I think that there's really no way to not make it partisan because they're not, they're not just people who don't care about elections to want to serve on the board. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of criticism, it's a lot of meetings, it's a lot of work, so. They are really entrenched in their party typically, I've noticed, that's my only comment.
We can't be afraid to put a question on the ballot because if that's the case, we wouldn't be sitting here right now, eleven of us, because we would never have a charter, right? So people voted to do that, here we are with a charter. My own personal feeling, and I said this before and I'm going to say it again. I feel that county council should be five members streamlined, day to day manager and a personnel board. Outside of that, I'd go back to that so fast and make your head spin. But that's only me, and that's one opinion, and because I saw in sixteen months the issues with the charter, that's all I have to say.
Any other comments on this? Alright, roll call.
Mr. Urban?
To introduce, yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liz Gavin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Governor, no, because of the fact that I don't like the structure of the two year term. I would like to commit Mr. Wilovich for working on this and coming up with at least a question to come to council. We've talked about so many things in the past, never got here, so I would like to commit him to that.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
This vote, yes.
Okay, that passes, just so everyone's aware, that's just the introduction, which means there'll be a public hearing and another vote on it, that was just the introduction. Alright, we don't have a public comment on.
Commander, sure, please.
Yeah.
So a little while back, it might have been a month ago, I asked that a work session for the custodial workers who served during COVID and then are still here. To hopefully add to COVID money, it's not a large amount, but we paid some type of bonus to keep. They weren't allowed to work from home, you know, they had to be here every day. And then it came to my attention, there was a few sheriff deputies did the same thing. They had to be here transporting individuals and doing everything that they do. So the ones that worked during COVID and are still here, I, I would like for the next meeting that we introduce. You know, a small bonus to show them our appreciation, and what better way to give a signing off to Harold Green and to give him a little bump when he walks out that door.
Sure, you can work with the office a while with it for an agenda supplemental, it'll be, I believe it's called premium pay under ARPA unless you wanted to use something, a different fund to pay it out of.
No, that's, that's.
But yeah, you guys, I, if you get an agenda supplemental, I'd be glad to add it, I think it's a good idea. Okay. Public comment on. Non-agenda items, Ms. Hartman?
I know. Right little scooter. Elizabeth Hartman handled the township, non-agenda items, probably one of the things that you talked about in your executive session was a lawsuit. Involving Von Swan and a former employee, I got a heads up on that. I spent my afternoon on Friday inside of the pathonator's office printing it all out. And the accusations, I'm not sure if you've all gone and looked at her record and cases that are currently open on her and the county. But there's quite a few of them, one, I understand was in settlement, working in settlement this past week that maybe you were talking about in the back. So that's number one, non-agenda, number two is pathways, I'd like somebody's printout when you're done tonight for what they're doing. And number three is the DA asking for the money for, from the opioid settlement. Now, this needs to go out in RFP, the DA's office is over, understaffed for what they have to do. They've never looked into my complaint, which was a private criminal complaint that I filed that was never found. We don't have staff to find this, so we're going to take on opioid money, no, we need harm reduction with RFPs to help people. We need mental health days for the COs in the jail that are cutting down the females that are hanging themselves. Because of mental health and the opioid epidemic, so we need the money there, not in the DA's office, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman, Mr. Griffin? Sorry, didn't mean to sound so violent when I said that, I was emphasizing the end.
Greg Griffin, Swarazville. In regards to the opioid settlement and how it's going to be divided up, obviously we do need. Money for longer term treatment, we do need money for, to get into the schools as the DA is suggesting to educate the children on the dangers of fentanyl. The DA even mentioned that we have to go start with the fifth and sixth grades. And I was surprised, I said, what about the seniors, he said, yes, them too, but we have to start with the fifth and sixth grades to educate the kids on the dangers of fentanyl. And as far as the, the DA getting the cut of the opioid money for law enforcement, it's definitely needed. Any one of us, if we knew where to go, we could leave this courthouse right now in ten minutes, go to a drug house and buy fentanyl. How is that possible? It means there's not enough enforcement and the DA and the drug task force, who I've been able to meet with. At their location, their office, they told me they, they can only do so much. So the DA definitely needs so many opioid settlement money. We have to shut these drug houses down. They're coming in for Jersey, New York, and they're killing our kids, we've lost a thousand kids in six years. We lost two hundred and eight young people in two thousand twenty one, I don't have the coroner's numbers for two thousand twenty two. And we're third out of sixty seven Pennsylvania counties for young people dying from fentanyl, we're third, we're behind Philly and Algeny County, so. The DA needs money for enforcement out of the opioid settlement money. As far as for treatment and educating the young people, I think there's plenty of money coming over the next twenty years, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Griffith?
My concern on the ordinance was the structure of the question, not necessarily what we're doing with it. When the question says, should the Loser and County Home Rule Charter be amended at article eight, section eight oh four, changing the appointment membership of the Board of Elections. To five members all appointed by at least a majority of members of council, is not conclusive enough to tell the voters what you're actually changing in that statute. That was my question when I originally addressed the ordinance, was that if we're going to put a question on the ballot for the people to decide, we need to tell the people what we're asking them to decide on. That is too vague of a question to include changes to that section of the charter which deal with section B, C, D and H. There's four sections of that eight oh four that you're changing in this question. Those are not outlined in that question, you're going to have challenges on that. If you get that question on the ballot, if it actually passes the vote. The other non-agenda item is when you look at your budget reports for your work session, please take note that there's no merit raise transfers. Except for the DA and the controller. That needs to be done by the administration, so council knows that the merit raises were given to the employees, right now it's not there. I also looked on the budget performance report and I see the health insurance is an allocated item that we're being charged for in the department. But was never budgeted by council, take a look at that as well on your expense sheet. It's five thirty dot thirty is the line item in the, on your work session. There is expenses being charged to the departments for health insurance, but council never budgeted any money in that line item. The other issue that I have is the flood authority to Mr. McGinley's point, we have no problem raising taxes on the people. But Mr. McGinley brought an interesting item to get the flood authority to give us some revenue and everybody voted it down. In the interest of saying, well, it's going to be a pass through, yep, you're right, it is a pass through, but so are taxes, everybody pays something, no matter which way they're going. We should have seized the opportunity to get some money out of them. If nothing else, we should have at least made a. If nothing else, we should have at least made them guarantee that they're not going to raise the flood levy fee on those folks when they build the structure, and it costs them extra money to spend to build a structure. Now we're at their mercy to raise the levy fee, because now they spent money to build a building, and now we're at their mercy. We should have made the proper amendment and either charged them for the land, or at least put a guarantee in that they're not going to raise some of these levy fee now, because they're going to build a building and incur expenses. And and I see that coming down the road, because the flood authority does nothing for free. They have expenses, just like everybody else, just like we do. We should have capitalized on the opportunity to collect that revenue. I think it's unfortunate that we didn't do that. And the last point that I have is the county manager, who we hired, is under a six-month probation period. I think council needs to make sure that they do the evaluation at the end of six months. Our personnel policy does not exempt anybody who's hired in this county. She should be evaluated after six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public on non-agenda items? Mr. Dombrowski.
Tom Dombrowski, Dallas. I was wondering if Ms. Crocamo has an exclusivity clause in her contract, meaning she can't work for anyone else while she's county manager? Because as of at least a week or two ago, she was still an assistant solicitor for Lackawanna County. And there's no way she should be a county manager for Luzern County and be employed for Lackawanna County at the same time. Our neighboring county, that's not ethically possible to do that. And if she does have an exclusivity clause, did she provide already letters of resignation for this assistant solicitor job in Lackawanna County? And also for her other job at Elliott Greenleaf and Dean at 160,000 a year? She's making way more than enough money from the county that she doesn't need a second job or a third job. You know, and she certainly can't shortchange the county and show 15 hours a week at 160,000 a year. So that's the question I'm posing to the chairperson. Does she have an exclusivity contract or not?
The contract that will be made public shortly, it was just executed, right? It'll be posted, it was an offer letter and it was just executed recently, so it'll be available for the public to view.
Do you know from memory of what, if it does or doesn't?
I don't believe it's specifically called an exclusivity clause, but there is.
Yeah, it's in the charter. Oh, okay.
That's what I, it's not.
I didn't know that. Good. Yeah, that's good, yeah.
I could have finished, but thank you, gentlemen, for speaking over me, love it, always appreciated. So it's not in the offer letter as an exclusivity clause, but she is subject to the terms of the Home Rule Charter.
Right, okay. So one way or another, it's.
Thank you. Next, I have an email, but does anybody else, members of public? I have no hands up on Zoom, I'll read this, I'll be quick. Her name is not included, but it's signed the executive director of Michael Lane's mission, and her name is escaping me right now, but she does live in the county because she normally attends the meetings, but I will read it. "It is appalling how the district attorney wants to be using the opioid settlement money to further stigmatize ones with substance abuse disorder, substance use disorder. As a parent who lost her child to an overdose in 2018 and began advocating and providing all forms of harm reduction for many across the county who are struggling, it is a mental health first and foremost, and should be treated as so. It has long-lasting effects across the board of homelessness, infectious disease, suicides, and deaths. Harm reduction is far more than just naloxone. It is showing, it is showing ones a true connection of hope, healing, and love, support, and linkage to care. It's testing drugs for illicit substances to prevent deaths and spread of HIV and HTV pregnancy. It's showing them wound care to horrible access from xylene that is here, or a college student who uses coke for recreational purposes. There are safer ways. Drug paraphernalia charges with fines only adds to homelessness, stigma fines, and incarceration, which has that circle of in and out of LCCF and high risk of death. The PREV program, I'm assuming that's prevention program, for schools should not be yet another law enforcement stigma-based one, but one taught by people with experience. In fact, an excellent program has been written by which I've sent to WVDA before. My feet are and have been on the streets doing the work. I can say this warm-handoff program doesn't work well when stigma hospitals, EMS, et cetera. I've recently spoken to local PD and magistrate regarding the LETI program in which neither heard of it. It should be enforced by all the PD departments and PDs. Again, I'll call it blood money, which what, which what it is. Sorry, there's no punctuation. Which what is, is from my daughter's death, should have a say, it not be used for such base stigma services. It was meant and allocated for PREV treatment. She, her executive director, Michael's mission, I apologize that the last paragraph was a little bit jumbled together. Any other members of the public on on agenda items? Not to be emotional during. On favor? Absentions opposed at 6:57, let's start at 7:05. Turn your mics off. On favor? Absentions opposed, agendas adopted. So our first item will be Riley Associates' presentation.
Hello, my name is Tom Redd, Riley Associates, and thank you for your company today.
Oh. Okay.
We're playing music for microphones.
So that's a microphone? All right, thank you. So, and it's, it. Well, as you know, it's been quite a long saga since the bridge was closed. And and PennDOT and the county has spent a lot of effort furthering the efforts to evaluate the bridges and now the planning to replace both bridges. And and since that time, there's been a, you know, major disruptions of traffic in the north end of the valley, in the west side and the east side of the river with the, with the closure of the Water Street Bridge. And I know that the county has worked very hard to figure out a solution to get the bridge open temporarily. But the situation we're in is, is that the bridge is, is likely to be, be closed for the next, until 2028 or 2029. So, you know, PennDOT is pursuing additional funding and they're, they're pursuing the design process with a scheduled bid letting in 2026 that could possibly be accelerated. It's a two- to three-year then construction process, so it's, it has been a long detour already. Would Water Street close, then it's going to be, you know, the rest of this decade. And it has, you know, has impacts on the, the quality of life in, in the various towns in the west side. And with congestion in Pittston, it has, has impacts on, on public safety. And now that, that it's clear that the Water Street won't be open. now that, that it's clear that the Water Street won't be open, um, we've, uh, we've met with, I've met with the county engineer and the acting manager and discussed, uh, providing services to study the traffic in Pittston and West Pittston and to put in, say, put optimize the signals to, uh, to have the right timing and the right operations for the current changed traffic pattern. Previously, uh, the, the bridge traffic was, was almost the same between the Water Street Bridge and the Fort Jenkins Bridge. Now with all going over the, the Fort Jenkins Bridge, the, there's, um, much less traffic on Kennedy Boulevard. A lot more traffic on, on part of Main Street and, um, you know, big backup on Route 92 and Exeter Avenue. And we proposed to, uh, study the traffic and, uh, propose improvements to those signals and to study and, uh, put a temporary signal in at the Route 92 and Route 11 at the west end of the Fort Jenkins Bridge. The, uh, Penda's proposal for the project replacement includes a, a permanent signal that Exeter Avenue, Wyoming Avenue intersection. So, um, let's temp, uh, the, so the, the, there will be a, a, a slight realignment in the intersection when they replace the bridge. And, uh, they will put a, uh, permanent signal in. So the, so the temporary signal, you know, would be less expensive than a permanent signal because it would have wooden poles and, uh, kit strand wire cable supporting the, uh, the, uh, traffic signals.
Any questions? Oh, Mr. Liskavage?
So that would be that the cost to the county, correct? They're looking for us to pick that up?
Yeah, so the.
So just to bring everybody up on the speed, cause I love this subject, the Water Street Bridge about as much note as Mr. Wilbur, the elevators and the roof. So with that being said, we, we went from a 20 ton weight limit, right? To zero, which that drives me crazy to begin with. Not, let's see what we can do. Could we get it to 10? We went with an open mind looking for four. And the PE comes back with after their engineering study, they came back with six. We're like, great. So myself and Brian Thornton attended the meeting with Penda. We were told, well, there was probably a never, was never gonna happen. And I'm still trying to get to the bottom of that because I don't understand how something can never happen. We would have never spent the initial money to do the study and, and test the bridge if we knew we could have never opened it. And we had someone here prior to us getting involved was ready to spend three quarters of a million dollars on that. So for the life of me, I still don't know how we went from 20 to zero. We asked for four, it could be six, you're not opening. And then while we sent those meetings, if I remember correctly, the question was asked if that I bar, everything's about this one I bar, okay? If that were to fail, was asked this individual and he said, nothing's gonna happen. In fact, probably two couldn't, nothing would happen because that's how well that bridge is constructed. I'm like, well, then somebody needs to explain to me still to this day what the issue is. Cause you know, for the life of me, I don't understand why we just can't put car traffic on that bridge to alleviate. And, and we're also cutting down on the timeline, I'm sure, of the concrete bridge because all the traffic is now diverted there, right? There's no sharing of it. At least we took that load off. I think we would help our cause to, to limp that bridge through, but that, I don't think that's gonna happen either. I just, and now it, I don't see how it's the county's fault to have to pay for that because we were told that if we did a study and it was favorable, they would reopen the bridge. Then they take that back and now they want us to pay for these portable street lights or whatever we're gonna call them and, and change the street lights to their liking, right? In, in essence, I think they created a dangerous situation on Exeter Avenue because that is, that's, uh, whoever, whoever has the junkiest car decides to pull out. That's the way that works. It's kind of like the traffic circle. You know, I remember being up in Massachusetts, like, cause when I first started working, I said, boy, I've never been in a traffic circle up here. I said, who was the right of way? They said, the person with the junkiest car. That's the way it works. So, oh, but I, I just, I mean, maybe you have some insight on that bridge that I, that myself.
Once I, you know, I'm representing the municipalities involved and that had that. So, yeah, and, and I mean, you know, the impact on the traffic as well as anybody.
Yep.
And, uh, the only I can say in a global sense is that, is that the scrutiny of bridge inspections and, um, and, you know, has, has, has noticeably changed, you know, in, you know, after the, the large bridge collapse in Pittsburgh.
Yep.
You know? And, and there's, um, you know, I think besides, besides the, called the numbers and the calculations, there are assessments of judgment, judgments of risk. And I think the judgment of risk is, uh, and I'm not the one, I'm just speculating as to what, what, what the, what the risk assessment is, is what is, is, what is the risk of, of multiple overweight vehicles over those numbers being on the bridge at the same time?
But if we, so we made a couple of different proposals. One would be we put one of those temporary lights like you're speaking of and you would cross that bridge based on a light. So you wouldn't get too many cars on the bridge. Again, we were gonna put a heading bar very low. The only thing that'd be there is passenger cars and SUVs. We even agreed to light it up, painted bright orange or yellow. I mean, we came up with numerous ideas and none of them just seem to make a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, I, I just wanna frame this for all council. There's a lot of you are up that way. It's a, by closing the county bridge, it diverted thousands of cars per day over on the other bridge, which already had many thousands of cars on it. That intersection is a nightmare. The second road going into one intersection, seven. So, to make it safer, because there are a lot of accidents there now, to make it safer, it suggested that temporary traffic signals be installed. 32 meeting Route 11, state routes. And Penda, I understand, doesn't wanna pay for these traffic signals. They said the boroughs should pay. Little West Pittston, less, less than 5,000 people can't come up 275,000. Penda said, well, it's a county problem because the county bridge is closed. That created all the traffic over there. No, that's not right. We paid for that study, which Mr. Liskavage alluded to a minute ago, paid $280,000 for the Larson Group to perform a four month study last fall. And it came back that that bridge could be safely open with six ton weight limit per vehicle. And Dr. Back said, nah, we, we don't wanna let that county bridge open. So we're still gonna make all that traffic go through that dangerous intersection. If you think it's so dangerous, then you guys pay for traffic signals. But we're not letting that county bridge open. I can understand if we close that county bridge, yes, we go and pay for those traffic signals. Cause now we created the problem. This problem rests squarely on Penda's shoulders here. I know it's a county bridge, but we went to that meeting about six, eight weeks ago, 10 people in the room, several Penda officials. And we asked these questions at the end of the meeting. If six tons could go over there safely and we could do all these provisions to make sure trucks can't get on that bridge, we'll put cameras and everything else. We'll post live security guards on both ends of the bridge. Will you consider reopening it? No. We had so many suggestions and they said, no, no. And I finally said, so before we even came here today, it sounds to me like no matter what we suggested, how sensible, plausible and scientifically sound it would be, you're gonna say no, right? Anyway. Why are we here? Why are we here? So it's Route 92 and Route 11, two state routes that have all the danger. Now, I'm gonna throw this out. I threw it out at that meeting. They just shrugged their shoulders. I, I, I hope it doesn't happen, but there's gonna be a tragic accident. They're flying down off that bridge into town. And if that happened and it's state routes 92 and 11, there's some very good attorneys around this area, liability attorneys, and I guarantee you, a great law firm representing the family of the victim or victims is gonna sue, sue several parties, probably the county, cause the county bridge is closed, but who's the party that is responsible for keeping that county bridge closed? Penda. Penda's the one that diverted that car through that intersection unnecessarily and resulted in a horrible accident. Penda's assuming a lot of liability here by keeping our county bridge, which was deemed safe to reopen by engineers, PE's at Larson Group. And Penda said, no, we're still not gonna open it. We're gonna, we want all that traffic to go through that intersection. So when something bad happens, it's on Penda. Now, Penda, I'm surprised they're not recognizing that liability they're assuming by putting all that traffic through that intersection. A great attorney would say, hey, that bridge was deemed safe to open by experts in the field. It was Penda's decision to not open it and make all that crazy traffic over there. I can't believe Penda's willing to assume all that liability. And it is terrible. It is terrible. I don't know why the county, Penda should be paying for that signalization. I don't know why.
Couple, couple things. I can interject. I, I agree with you. I also, let's not put these like crazy car accidents out into the universe. My mom would say I'm a little flaky, but I don't like saying that stuff out negatively. Don't like saying it out loud. So we hope that doesn't happen. We'll not.
Well, it's been a lot of rain.
Yes, it could, yeah, it could, it could happen. But anyways, um, here's our, here's where we're at, okay? Um, should we pay for it? No. Does it need to be done so that it's safe? Yes. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. I understand where you're both coming from. I agree. But also like, where do we go now? Because it needs to be done. And I, yes, it would be ideal if Penda would pay for it, but also there are residents of the county who are, who are involved in driving in this traffic every day. And yes, it's the municipalities, but how do you expect the municipalities to pay for it? So we're kind of in the middle of all this. So Mr. Riley is here specifically to talk about the traffic study and the temporary lights and, and so all of the questions about Penda and stuff, I don't really think you're the right person to direct all that.
Well, I think, I think the question is about, is about, I think, if, if, if the bridge is not, is not gonna reopen, which, you know, we, we've, our first conversations about this was when we, we, we didn't know if that study was gonna be done a lot earlier last year. So we started talking about these, 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 um, called traffic, uh, improvements and, and then that discussion was put on hold while the study was being done by Larson. And I think the conversation is really, I think, I think we all agree that needs to be studied, needs to be improved, that there's, there are congestion problems, there are safety problems. And the issue is, is who's gonna pay for it? And, you know, responsibility and ability to fund. So I guess what I would propose is, is that in cooperation between the municipalities and the county, that we, that we, you know, again, approach Penda, you know, about the ability to help fund it.
Agreed.
Interstate rush.
Right.
State road.
Yeah.
State road.
Two state roads. Two state roads.
Responsible for. They. Um, who's, the request was to have the county pay for it and. Yeah.
Yeah, us, $275,000, correct?
That includes, that's construction, that's gross cost, including construction.
For temporary stabilization.
Had we known that, we would've spent $280.
And the building is not. That's what I'm asking.
Who, who requested a proposal from me? The county engineer.
Brian Swett asked him to come tonight to talk.
I understand that point, but, and that's really like, in my eyes, a budgetary situation. And I think council is the one has to determine whether it's a budgetary situation, when it should be. Now, I understand, and he makes a good point, presents well. And I understand, I believe I understand some issues. Something like the way it's been about. What else, myself, I mean.
I agree with you.
But the one thing I will say though, like you've been reading the Harrisburg paper a little bit, which I've tried to, legislature is now making a move that gas taxes have been having for, um, ten years now. Some of that money was diverted, paid for state police for years. It was a big number too, like 40% or something. They're trying to get that all back for roads and bridges. If that happens, I'm hoping that will tolerate this type of a project.
Well, that is very, that is a very important funding issue that, yeah, yeah. It's, it's been discussed and it seems to have some possibility of.
It's like, there's some traction.
Yes.
So.
Hopefully.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
One, one of the key factors here too is the money that's promised for that bridge. They don't have it yet. And if that money gets redirected, we're still stuck four or five years later with no bridge and it'll take another three, four years. So that's where, unless we get a guarantee and right, we're getting that money for that bridge, I think the next step is to move, go toward the LSA money, get the bridge done. And by 25 or six, it'll be built and over with. And we wouldn't be held to the, all, all the, the strings attached to that federal money.
Am I missing is Larry Plash, Greg, anybody from engineering here? Maybe I don't recognize you? No. Okay.
I will also say, I talked to Mike Carroll, who's the Penda secretary at this point. He was gonna get the information for me, Brian, what Liskavage just talked about, in fact, the funding, et cetera. Called him yesterday and I didn't, for some reason, I didn't pick up the call. I called him after he's supposed to call with more information. As soon as I get it from, I'm sure, but I didn't have it now.
Yeah, my understanding is that the funding has been programmed for the construction of both bridges.
Okay, cause when we asked at that meeting, they said, as of right now, it's not guaranteed and it wouldn't be the last time it ever got redirected, was the word you.
They said it looks good.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Well, well, I think the, the long range budget has it programmed. And I think that's, you know, it, but, but if that budget is, budget is four or five years out from now. So, uh, you know, and they, Penda has also applied for a competitive federal grant, you know, which would be new money into the area. So, so it seems, I mean, in my interaction with them on the design progress, you know, we have, we have a meeting every month with, uh, West Pittston and Pittston and Penda and the consultants and, and representatives from, from the county administration. And we got an update every month. And, you know, they're, you know, they're making very sharp progress on, on, on it. So, so I see that, I see Penda, you know, Penda is making a significant effort, you know, moving the design process around and, and the funding process. So, yeah. You know, I, I think that the funding, the funding of this aspect is worth discussing with Penda further.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. Uh, number two is now number seven. So it is, uh, Hazelton Public Transit Local Match.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Sharp. I'm the director for Hazelton Public Transit. We supply, supply public transportation for Hazelton and the surrounding communities along with Mountain Top and Wolfspare. I'm here once again to ask for your support in, uh, providing us with our local match so we can obtain our operating assistance grant, uh, from Penda. This year, our operating assistance grant we would be getting for Penda is for $2,671,653. In order to obtain this, we need a local match of $208,415. And if we were to get this, we can keep providing the service to, uh, the residents throughout.
Questions? I thank you, Mr. Sharp.
I just have.
Sure.
I, I know last year was a conversation between Schuylkill and Carving Counties trying to pitch in on this. Or do we get anywhere with that?
I reached out again this year with, with letters to both counties. Uh, no reply, same as I did in the past. I also went as far as to, uh, Representative Watro's office to see if possibly something could be done there. I went to Senator Orgel's office. I talked down there. And I also went to Congressman Cartwright's office. So. So I don't know if it will do any good, but I am extending all my avenues to see if I can take some burden off.
Yeah, because this is asking for ten thousand more than last year.
Well, every year it does, yeah, it does go up.
I, I get that part, but I mean, if they were even kicking the increase side of it.
I, I do, and, and, and I do break it out every year, so for my own knowledge, so I know where we're at also. I know it's a small portion, but it's, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
As far as this, this match too, I mean, once again, this is a Hazelton city authority. Now, I was looking at the Hazelton City minutes just a few minutes ago, and at no time did anybody from council on their side ever request. Any official action. I think in the future, if we're gonna give away county money, municipality or the authority should be bringing in their minutes. From their representatives, from their executive board, or any of the, uh, council members requesting it on behalf of the county.
The way, the way it's worked with Penda, I, I come here first. Then, once I would get the, um, your resolution saying that the council would agree, I take that to our city council and then.
I think the process is backwards, though.
I understand.
If, if, if it's, you're asking money from the county, right? It should be an official action from the municipal body first, saying, hey, we're gonna approve an, an action on our end to give it, present it to the county. For them to, to, it's because you're asking us for the money. I mean, anybody could come up with a letter is based on this particular type of scenario. In other words.
I understand.
Any, any member of the public, any member. Out there to just say, hey, Luzern County, we'd like a hundred thousand dollars for a match, but we don't have any, any official.
I can do that movement in the future. That, that's the way you should feel, so we then, I don't see that being.
I mean, I mean, because, you know, it's, it's a letter coming directly from you. I, I mean. When are we gonna, I mean, like, we, obviously, we give money without a problem to L C T A, because they're Luzern County Transportation Authority. You know, I, I mean, I also wanna see your ridership numbers again, year over year.
I can send them up, not a problem.
You know, because I, I, I. I understand this for a good cause. But I don't see a lot of people using public transportation systems. I mean, I drive around quite a bit, and I'm down in Hazelton four nights a week. Okay.
Or I can tell you our routes throughout the daytime hours, we start at five fifteen in the morning. Through our buses are, I'm not saying they're filled, but we have routes that take hundreds of people daily. Not every route, but a lot of them do that. So, I mean, people rely on us, rely on us. They're going to work, they're going to doctor, they're going shopping, and they come up here, they conduct business in other, you know, different places in Wolfspare, too.
And I just think, you know, to have a county with two different transportation systems is kind of asinine. Only because, you know, it means one Luzern County, three hundred plus thousand people. You're not getting any assistance from those other counties, which I, I really find that reprehensible. You know, uh, because you do go into those other counties, and, and you want us to cost basically have one hundred percent of the allocation. And, and no cooperation from two other counties where they're getting some services from us. And I think it's very unfair to Luzern County as a county. And you, as a resident of this county, should be advocating for those counties to pay up. Or get those legislators that, that span across those county lines, to pony up some money.
I, I, I understand. I mean, other agencies that I know have gone into each other's counties. And it's just the transit type of thing. They, they really don't ask because they go into another.
We're asking you to do that.
I, and I'm trying, and I am trying.
Mr. Thornton is next, but just for the public, for the record, uh, and for council members that are new, this is Groundhog Day. Uh, we go through this every year. We have the same conversation. We ask, uh, Hazelton to, well, council members ask Hazelton to get other counties to pony up their end. They don't, we pay, um. Just so everybody's up to speed, this happens over and over and over again. Mr. Sharp, you're here for it always. So, just so everyone's filled in. We're constantly trying to get them to, because it's a burden on the taxpayers, but it's also a burden on. The Hazelton taxpayers who are benefiting from the system, but they also are part of this county. Um, so I think if there's other counties that are using this, which there are, they, they should, anything, anything. But be nice, and it's not you.
I try, believe me.
I understand that, but like. Don't you think they should give us, anything would help, anything would help.
My point, precisely, is what she was just saying. I was here last year for the first time, and we had to see exact same.
Yes, I know.
And, and we said, I think it was Mr. Urban said it. We, we don't need a bunch of letters from people in Hazelton. There needs to be official action, maybe a resolution from Hazelton City Council. And signed off by the mayor with the resolution, bring it to council, say, this is what our city officials, public elected officials want. This is what our public elected officials want. We passed a resolution. And, and we, we said that last year, and it didn't happen, and now here we are again, and, and not only that. We asked last year for the ridership numbers, I mean.
I did supply that.
That was later. That was after the fact. Came to us first for the money. And we said, we need ridership numbers. Let's see what's going on down there. We, we don't like, anybody that kind of comes to the light, just hand money out to entities if we don't know a little bit more about the entity. That's receiving our tax, taxpayer money out here. So we asked for that last year, then it came back after the fact, maybe a few days later, a week later, and we got ridership numbers. But we had the same conversation about ridership, lack of resolution from city council. Uh, the, the, what you said, the other counties not pointing up. Um, I'm just gonna off the wall make a suggestion here. Maybe we agree to give this match. For a large percentage of the match, based on the contingency that these other counties contributed, contributed five thousand dollars. Or something stupid, something small. And, and, and then if they do, then we give our back. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mr. Perry.
I've been here the same thing for six years. And, and really.
And you still seem interested.
So Matt, can you go into Macadoo, Macadoo's for Schuylkill County, if you go into Beaver Meadows, that's Carver County. Should they contribute? Absolutely. They have. You've been trying. Representative Watro and Senator Orgel now have their offices in Hays. Maybe they could be a source to do so. The research I did, I don't think there is anything in state I couldn't find where. Counties pay other counties for transportation. It's always reciprocal, right? We go from Luzern, Lackalaw, Lackalaw, and it's down here. They don't come up here. Schuylkill County doesn't go to Luzern County, either does Carver. So that, that's a problem. And, and it's a problem that it hasn't been done, hasn't been paid for. This is gonna, you would know how many years we've been doing this.
Twenty many.
Way before Home Rule. So, so we have a problem. If, if we put any kind of stipulation on it, it's like, what's the end result of it? So, so we're not gonna pay for, for the transportation into Macadoo and Carver, seriously. But those people use it. Mr. Sharp would have the buses going there if he could have the ridership. And, and if you provide that for us, that would be great. But he's not gonna, he's not gonna have bus routes for two people on it.
Last year, we just had a transit develop, Penda paid for a transit development plan, study done. And we actually, our run into Macadoo was actually a little more than we had prior. And same thing with Beaver Meadows and going into Weatherly. So Penda looked, it took them almost a year. And they looked at all the routes, and we, we need to go there. That's why we still go there.
So, so, you know, we're kind of caught, you know, just to save the next year.
So you know who will come, you know who will come with us? Mr. Thornton and Mr. Scavish would definitely carpool. We could go to the Yingling Brewery. We could stop at Schuylkill County Council meeting. It will be a good time.
One comment I made, I think Mr. Sharp, correct in saying it was a year.
Uh, that was, uh, let me see, this is gonna be our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, it was twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. You, you, um. I think it was about twenty, twenty thousand dollars. That is correct. Yes. The city paid that difference. I believe Luzern County that year gave a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and then it changed, and then the city gave twenty thousand and it changed to. I believe that year was one, one eighty-nine or total one ninety-eight or something like that. I don't have the number up here.
The same issue. And the problem is. We have people who live in our county who go to those places, but he's running buses. If you wanna take that away, now they have to go over there and find somewhere to get some transportation. That's our dilemma. That's our dilemma. And I certainly, and I think, um, Mr. Urban raises some good questions. I think Mr. Urban knows it's not an authority, it's a department of the city.
Right.
So the information should come from the city. But I don't. I, you know, myself, I, I have to support this. I have to support our people who live in that part of the county who use those services. That's what I think to do. I know it's an issue. I know we're trying to do a lot of different things. I, myself, as chair, wrote some letters to those people, different counties, the chairs and commissioners. And no response. No response.
I'll give it a shot again.
It's hard.
Yeah.
I did this year again, no, no response still, so.
State legislators live in there, that might help.
That might help.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, we will move on. So, uh, so the old number one, the, the budget reports, do you guys have any questions? Um, Mr. Regikis is on, but we won't have him talk unless you guys have questions on those reports. All right, moving on. Well, Pat's presentation. I believe it is Larry Dahl, am I right? Mr. Dahl, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
My name's Larry Dahl, and I'm just Wellpass. Um, as you know, we're the, had happened for some time, the provider of medical and mental health services for detainees at Luzern County Prison. And following, uh, uh, the last council meeting, uh, in the interest of being a good corporate partner for the county. Uh, we agreed to extend the contract that had been in place through the end of June. But, uh, so that we don't get back to the same situation where we're nine days before the end of June and, and looking at, what do we do for July first? Um, I thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, um, and to discuss a little bit of what, about what, I think you're looking at as prospects. We certainly respect the desire of the county to continue to provide quality medical and mental health services to people who are detained in that facility. The mental health crisis in America has certainly affected every county detention facility. The, you know, these facilities have become the de facto mental health hospitals in America. Um, there's a, the rising severity of, of medical conditions of detainees in, in local detention facilities around America. Has certainly added an ever-increasing burden, uh, both in terms of manpower as well as financial. The COVID crisis, uh, really exacerbated what had been a building nursing shortage in America for more than a decade. And as evidenced by, um, the administration of every hospital in America struggling to maintain staff in hospitals, having to cancel elective surgeries. And so on, um, we don't have any option of canceling services, you know? The people who are detained there are entitled to receive the services, and we're obliged to provide them, you know, under our contract. The annual increases that had been built into the contract from two thousand twenty onward were three percent. Uh, each year, probably more than eighty percent of the overall cost of the contract is staff. Uh, and I can assure you that had we only limited, uh, salary increases of three percent in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. We would have no staff. So we have exceeded, you know, what was allocated, uh, starting back in two thousand twenty and as part of our budget, rather significantly. And, uh, we were probably, um, at least twelve percent at the time, as of last month, when the contract would have ended. Behind where the current market status is to, to engage our ends. In the extension, uh, that we agreed to through the end of June. Um, we were, uh, granted some monies to increase salaries, and we have already put in place to increase salaries for existing staff. Um, I know the big conversation, uh, in the last meeting was to enter into month-to-month agreements. Uh, month-to-month agreements make recruiting and retention in a correctional setting even more difficult than it already is. Because people don't wanna take a job they think only has one month's duration. So I know you want to do an R F P. I respect that desire. It's certainly a way, in, in any jurisdiction in America, that you have the ability to measure quality and, and. Value for prospective contractors, and we welcome that process. However, looking at the process, um, it's my thought that it would take you at least four months to complete such a process, allowing that the old R F P. Uh, really simply can't be rewritten and put on the street because it doesn't address, uh, the very definite need for medically assessed treatment. And the change in the overall demand on mental health services that's happened since the last time the county did an R F P. So if you got that up on the street for the second market by the end of June. And you allow potential contractors to come and visit the facility, get a tour, and then time for them to submit questions. And then time for the facility administration to answer those questions. And potentially have to create amendments to, to the R F P. And the proposals, obviously, written by prospective providers. You're gonna be into August and September before you can resolve that problem. My suggestion is that it's probably in all of our collective interests, starting with the ability to maintain and recruit. The staff necessary to continue uninterrupted services. That you entertain an extension of the current contract through the end of December. That you target in the R F P, a start date of a new contract of the first of the year. That will give whatever company you ultimately elect to go forward with from January first onward. Adequate opportunity to transition and not interrupt, uh, the, the division of care in the facility. And as I say, you know, Wellpass welcomes the opportunity to be considered in a competitive environment. We're, we'll stand on our record. You know, we've been in business a long time. Uh, today, I will say, we are not what we might have been some years ago, that we have continued to, uh. Make a, as genuine an effort as possible to improve the quality of care. To, as I say, we had already raised salaries significantly ourselves, uh, from existing contract allocations. And now we believe the salaries we're offering today, uh, will allow us to fully recruit and retain staff. Um, through the end of the year, if you follow my suggestion of setting that for a start date on a new contract. And the reality is, is that whoever you ultimately choose to provide services going forward. Will be faced with the same dilemma of having to compete with local healthcare systems, hospitals, nursing homes, private practice offices, et cetera. In retaining and recruiting staff. So I don't, I think unfortunately, I'm a taxpayer in the county I live in. That there really is little opportunity to save money in terms of delivering, uh, appropriate care. Uh, for the detainees at the local prison. Uh, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Any questions? Thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate it.
We'll be happy to, to present a proposal, uh, on what the cost would be for such an extension through the end of, of, uh, December. Uh, please keep in mind, June thirtieth is when our current contract expires.
Okay, uh, attorney scheme, just keep us apprised of that, uh, situation. Thank you, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Um, we did. I don't know where we're at on it right now.
What's the status of that? That's important, based on a lot of information.
Attorney scheme, you know where we're at? Okay, um.
I think we need a start date. We have, we need more conditionals.
You know, I think you need to get the R F P, and then you could put dates and deadlines. You need to get an R F P. Otherwise, where are we going? You have something to start with. Several years back, but now you're wanting to add features that. People in the prison need now versus what they did then, because you have a different administration, that is, they may add some bots.
And then map program, obviously. Okay, all right, uh, we'll move on to. Yeah. All right, number four, discussion regarding resolution improving the sales of certain parcels of property held in a posse for elite revenue solutions, L S C, actually Luzern County tax thing, you know. This is your beautiful packet. Guys, don't throw it away because otherwise Ms. Lawrence will have to kill another ten trees for the voting meeting. Uh, so keep this one, please. Any questions on this? We have discussion regarding D A memo opioid committee appointment. Uh, that's for three council members, but I've had suggestions, uh, back to the one council member. Um, and I have a email from our district attorney that I will read, uh, for this agenda item. I understand on tonight's agenda, council is considering our proposal for the opioid committee. Council is also considering whether they prefer three members of council be appointed to that committee. The structure proposed by the parties listed on the previous memo was taken from the successful committees in the majority of other counties. Those parties all bring different expertise to the committee, representing all facets of the opioid epidemic. In our proposal, we attempted to limit the number of people involved, so as to not overrepresent any side or construct a committee with so many members. That is difficult to efficiently accomplish our goal. Since council ultimately votes on our proposals for uses of the money, council. council has the final say in its disposal, so long as such uses are according to the guidelines. That member also acts as a liaison to ensure accurate information as immediately translated to council. Respectfully, in speaking with certain other members of the committee, we are of the opinion that adding two additional members of council to the committee that all represent the same interests and that also ultimately have the vote on uses of the money. We are therefore respectfully requesting that council limits its representation to one liaison. Unfortunately, I cannot be available for the entire meeting this evening. However, if you let me know a few minutes in advance, I will make myself available to call in and answer any questions. Our ultimate goal is to expediently use the money so that as few lives are lost in the interim, if such a loss could have been prevented by use of this funding. We have already been stagnant for eight months and are trying our best to move the ball forward at a speedy but responsible pace. So basically, he's just reiterating his original one council member instead of three, since ultimately council would have the say anyway, so the one person would really just be a liaison on that committee rather than having three.
If that's the case, I'd put two members in the public. Because there's no member from the public on there, it's all internal people, anything, people that are close to the streets, you know.
All right, we could communicate with, that with the DA.
I mean, that, I think that would be wise too, because you got people that are normal individuals that are out on the streets knowing what the drug problem is that would benefit. Put two on there, make it nine.
I will relay the message.
Mr. Urban, I agree, the three council people, we have the responsibility to fund it.
Sure, absolutely.
And if we get that vote, that will be amended.
I think, you know, with the board of 11, I mean, it's, it's having one person that represents the entire 11, I think is too little. And maybe one person makes you get something.
Yeah, then putting 11 on that board gives them the same problem as all us 11 birds sitting here.
The other problem is, you have a lot of employees there, but you don't have the representativeness aside. Because the fact is, it's the council, it's the group that has funded it. They have the responsibility over and above, and you know, when I look at this, and I could, maybe we have to do something, we have to get some kind of. Definitely have to make sure the group is listening to all the bodies of all. And law enforcement wants a certain group, the mental health people want certain information. Drug enforcement wants other information, but we have to try to do what's best for the citizens at the center. Not each of those different entities.
I mean, a lot of this is in-house and nothing really from a public perspective. I understand, they understand the problem from an internal perspective, not from a street perspective.
Again, the point is, we have a lot of members, a lot, lots of the level of members, full-time employees. It's going to be tough for them in some cases, they have one representative that has a full-time situation to show up by the beginning.
Sure. All right, we'll move on, discussion regarding resolution approving Loser County Tax Homestead exclusion request for all properties approved for the exclusion rule established under PA Act 50, 1998, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, I brought this, this one forward because, you know, it was a sticky point that I saw. You know, unfortunately, a campaign piece, I said, let's do it now. Why, why wait till next year to have the discussion? Because you can't do it for budget year 2023, you can do it for 2024. I think it would save the taxpayers roughly, I think, about $63 off their $10,000 exclusion. So if property was, well, their primary property, you would be deducting 10% off of their assessed value. That would be just the, you know, the millage. What is it, I think 6.35 or 6.5, 6.31, it's a long number, but it's about $65 in savings for a homeowner, their primary residence. And this resolution is based on what the commissioners did back in the day in the same, in a resolution. So it's just repeating the language from about 15 years ago. It's what we took away as a prior council, personally, but a prior council took it away. You know, there were promises of keeping it, so they made it more permanent, right? You go back to full assessed value, but I think it's time to give the taxpayers back some, some money. Giving a lot of groups cash, we've given a lot of entities, businesses, nonprofits money, I think it's time to give people some.
Mr. Martin?
I, I think the one obstacle to that, I'm in favor of giving taxpayer money back also. But is, is it true that under the rules, you cannot give certain people a reduction in their taxes by taxing other people more money? Is that one of the rules?
We're not taxing people more.
It wouldn't be?
No.
So you would just, I think if about $5 million we would be losing, the taxpayer, where would we get it?
I mean, I'm proposing $10,000 off the assessed value, I mean, you could propose $5,000, taking, and then taking $2,500 if you want.
Well, I think when it was removed, it was 4.7 million, was that the figure?
That is, I think at the time.
Now it might be over $5 million, $5 and a half. So I just wonder if we give that, and it sounds great, but you gotta have a, a balance on the other side of the balance sheet of where that money comes from.
Well, 10 years ago, you didn't have all the businesses, warehousing, all different businesses in this county either.
So I mean, the budget that exists now, though, like we'd have to come up with an extra $5, $5 and a half to get.
Most likely, we have to run the numbers.
Yeah, it's gonna be at least five or so.
At least five.
I'm not arguing, I think it's a great idea, I'm just looking for suggestions during council, where maybe $5, $5.
But my, my initial proposal was $10,000 off of the assessment, but you can make $5,000 off of the assessment, that reduces it by half. You still have $5, $5 and a half million in the budget.
Yeah, we barely made the budget work this time, and I think this, I think this is great, but I think the original, so when this was first implemented, which I was probably 12. This, uh, this was for the, to be a placeholder while the reassessment was happening, right? Is that?
No, this was after reassessment.
Okay, are you sure?
Because when they were questioning the ball, that's when they were borrowing money too.
As you, everybody probably realizes, it wasn't 12. And when they did that, because they did the reassessment, some of the assessments. So in order to offer a little bit of relief, to offer, I'll say that.
Got it, and then it was.
Only one of three counties at that point that had it.
Then it was removed by a majority of council.
Two causes of 15.
Okay. What was the, what, what was the consensus why it was removed?
Removed because we needed $4.3 million of that on the budget.
Right, which is exactly what we need now.
Which would have been more than 4%, that $4.3 million.
Yeah, we could do the exclusion, then we're gonna have to raise taxes, then it's just gonna be counterintuitive.
I, I think it's a great idea, but I think we don't entertain it until the debt's paid.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or hey, me, Mr. McGinley can vote yes and be like, see, guys? Good luck finding the whole of the budget, um, but we voted for it, but yeah, I, I, I really like the idea of it, but it's tough.
I think, you know, I, I don't know where the budget not in committee is, you know, with, with, is there potentially a surplus from last year?
Yeah, it is not, not done yet.
Not yet.
We've been meeting, we've been getting updates, June 30th is the deadline, right? Usually runs early to close that, so in July, they'll begin to make the presentation, council's all.
I mean, I think over the last few years that we've had some budget surpluses, right?
Yes, also due to vacancies.
It wasn't $5 million. And we're never gonna hit 100%, I don't think we're ever gonna hit 100% true, like, employment.
I don't disagree with you, but most of the surplus the last several years, because our vacancy rate has been up. 911 is generally for breakdancing, that's about half of their staff.
I mean, we, we fund the county at 100%, but we're never gonna hit 100% like total occupancy, we can keep the jobs. So like, I mean, it's either that or maybe we go back and propose a resolution to sweep the money and put it into, you know, reserve, because, I mean, I, I just want to get a control on this spending the money because if you make it available to them, they're gonna spend it.
You remember, Mr. Urban, we took hazard money for the capital, right, the capital funds, very low. Those are things you can do, once you know what the surplus is there.
Again, surplus won't always be there, it's not, it's not always gonna be there. This will be every year.
Yeah, you need money in the capital fund, you want to put money in reserve, you can do that. And then becomes decision council.
And this is only, like I said, it's only on your primary people, it's not on a secondary home, it's not on any businesses, it's not, you know, so it's just.
Still working for a $70,000, you know, like we have a lot of big, large parcels that we have.
If you keep it at $10,000, if you make it $5,000, tap that, you can get $2,500, it's a quarter of that, so. It all depends on where you want to be, you know, from the assessed value, primary. You know, if you want to give people back $10 or whatever, you could just say, hey, we're only gonna take $2,000 off your assessed value. And then whatever the millage is times 2,000, that's the difference.
I think the benefit of giving someone $30 or $35 a year in tax repayment really is very little and pales in comparison to the whole creates, to a county controlling that budget amount, whether it be $20 or $40 or $60. It, it's an enormous straight-up budget on the other side. I, I like the idea of waiting till we pay the debt off, debt which previous council members did not run up, that paid out through strict fiscal discipline. And we're on that course, and I hope it continues that way the next seven years, and then we'll have the debt paid off, and it'll be an annual debt service freed up of about $26 million. $26 million, we're gonna have sitting on this table of action. And then we could really do tax relief, prove roles, but we're still living under the sins of the past and tremendous problems that created, which I think we weigh down now, that's just fine.
Thank you, guys. Anybody? All right, move on to public comments, members of the public that wish to speak.
I think anybody else has a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Again, my little scooter. Elizabeth Hart, we hand over township, I wish Well Path would have stayed so that they can hear me. Unfortunately, they gave their little presentation and ran out the door.
I think he's pretty far away in his defense.
The lawsuit, how many lawsuits have we settled with Well Path? Does anybody know, in the time that they've been taking care of our prison? And how many suicides have we had under the care of Well Path as our nursing? Well Path was in charge when Shaheen Mackey died in the prison, I'd like to say murdered in the prison. That was never investigated under the previous DA. When are we going to become proactive rather than reactive? So the gentleman from Hazelton comes in here tonight, and again, I've heard this spiel about seven, eight times because I've been coming here a long time with my mother, great commissioners. You asked him last year for this, 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 and he comes in here with the single letter, here, he's wasting our time, we want your money. You knew what you needed, bring it in, be prepared, or don't come for us for money because we're wasting your time, so yours are stuck in shit and we can't get into other stuff. And I'm sorry to say that word, but, like, it's crazy. So in their presentation, I never heard anything about the inmates in there other than it was a de facto mental health facility. Why? What's broken? Our justice system, our court system, our police, it's all broken, they're not helping the opioid epidemic, they're not helping the mental health, it's all broken, they're ending up over there. And it all needs to get looked at and burdening everybody else with this new opioid money in-house here? They can't handle what they have to straighten stuff out, it just doesn't make sense. Steve, I love that you said people from the community, there are people that are out there in their spare time, like I am out helping families, helping people to not overdose, handing out Narcan, handing out blankets, they picked up medical supplies yesterday. Her name is Pamela Keith, that's who that email's from, she's out all the time. Like, she's dedicated into making sure harm reduction, harm reduction, that's all she's on, talking about, like, how do we stop this? What do we do? You know, like, I, I think we need people that are out in the trenches, working with the homeless on these committees to help. I can't get on a committee because I won't keep my mouth shut. I'd love to go work for children, I really would.
I actually think you'd be valuable on a committee, because you articulate things really well, you do. I'll remember, Mr.?
On the, on the opioid settlement committee, there's millions of dollars over 20 years from what I understand, maybe a million a year coming in or 2 million. And plus, there's another settlement, I heard it coming, so it's a considerable amount of money. And I think we need to have at least three councilmen watching, watching the money. Technically, it's a taxpayer, it's taxpayers' money, it's coming into our county bank account. So councilmen are elected by the people, three councilmen on this 11-person committee, I think it's important. They, they can watch the opioid money, sometimes these funds over the years get splintered off. We've seen it with the gasoline road tax, the troopers took some of it, it's, it didn't go to the road tax. We need to, we need the councilmen watching where this money's gonna be coming in over many, many years, whether that it goes to the opioid situation and curing the opioid problems. The tobacco settlement that we get many millions of dollars in the state, we're kind of losing touch about where that money all goes. So I, I think we need elected officials, three councilmen on the opioid settlement committee as a watchdog. Make sure the money gets spent where it's supposed to go and, uh, councilmen are representatives of the people. Whereas the other members of the committee are not elected a people, they, they may not have to answer to where all the money went. And the councilmen will be answering to where the money's going, is spent to the right, like, right places and because the councilmen represent the people, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Griffin?
On the Hazelton Transit thing, I, I agree with all of council, we've been here. I, when I was on council, I heard the same story about Hazelton Transit. I would suggest that maybe somebody on council make an amendment to the resolution to put either a sunset clause on that service of the funding that gives them like three years to figure out other alternative funding and then the county doesn't fund that anymore. But in the interest of Mr. Perry's point, there are people in Loser County that rely on that service and we don't want to jeopardize those folks who use that service for transportation because they're gonna have to get it somewhere else. I would suggest that possibly, and I know PennDOT did the study on this back when we were on council, I was enjoying, was that they are Loser County, there's no reason in the world why Loser County Transit cannot, or Transportation Authority can't be up there to service those routes, other than the fact that Hazelton's doing it now, so they don't have, they don't, they aren't up there. There should be a collaborative agreement between Hazelton Transit and Loser County Transportation Authority so that the Transportation Authority could take that service over and service those folks. And we're already funding them. We're actually funding two entities, one who's a city entity, we have no control over, something to consider. But if we don't ever put a sunset clause or something in the resolution that says, effective this day, the county's not funding it anymore, or effective, you have this many years to square that away, we're never, we're gonna continually kick this can down the road and we're never gonna get off from under, in four years from now, it'll probably be $300,000. I'm not in favor of cutting the funding without giving them an alternative because those folks need that service. So I think that's important to keep focused, that, you know, this bus service is not just sitting there wasting money, it's actually providing a very valuable service, those folks should pay for that, but they're not. To Well Path's point, the issue that I have is the same as Ms. Hartman's. They are responsible for a lot of the things that this county's been in litigation over, and we all know that. And RFP possibly put it out, see if we get any bidders, I know it's a pretty exclusive site, not a lot of people bid on that stuff. Maybe look into doing our in-house medical like they used to do in the commissioner days and see what it costs for us to have our own people do that, hire it out, do it that way and have doctors come in or nurses come in and do the intake process and all the things they do and sublet that out as a vendor service. And maybe that might be cheaper than having an, an outside service that's actually not doing the work. I, I mean, Shaheen Mackey is a classic example, along with others, that we need to take a look at whether we want Well Path there or not, regardless of what the cost is. Just something to consider as we look at that Well Path contract, I think it's important to keep our, keep our eyes on the service that we're getting for the money we're paying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam has her hand up.
Hello, yes, I am Pam and I run Prevention Point, Michaeline's mission, and it is not taxpayer money, the opioid settlement money, it's. And it is not taxpayer money, the opiate settlement money. It's actually...
Sorry, Pam, to interrupt. If you could state your last name and your municipality.
Keefe, and I'm from Mountain Top.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, it's not taxpayer money, the opiate settlement money. It's actually from Big Pharma money. And there is actually an opiate trust that has been in place. So the money is actually allocated to the right places, which is not supposed to be law enforcement or prisons, that I have been watching. Also, yeah, my boots have been on the ground now for about five years. I do drug checking, I do fentanyl testing strips, xylazine testing strips, in which became legal, all drug checking in January, in which I have not seen anybody in the county giving any of that stuff out at all, which is very disappointing whatsoever. I don't even know why the county still doesn't even have it. I give out thousands of doses of Narcan besides training it. Yeah, something desperately needs to change, and I do not think that keep criminalizing people for substance use disorder is really the answer. Well Path definitely has shown what they don't do. I've spoken to many people that got out of prison over there. In for a couple days, out, they overdose and they die, which is very sad. And it's happening more often than not. I mean, something really, really, really needs to change. There has to be a better way than this, and I don't think that wasting settlement money on more drug bust is going to do any good. I mean, I've been in the trap houses, under bridges, into the woods, everything else, and you're just not going to ever win the war on drugs that's here in this county. You can bust a drug house, and you're not going to really find the drug dealers. The ones that users are looking for, you're not really busting the ones that need to get busted. The little ones, maybe, yeah, but not the big-time ones. You're not, you're just not getting them. And spending more money on burying our children, I think, is, just makes me sick on another county corner. Like, it's just nauseating. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other members in the public? Hearing now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attention, opposed, meetings adjourned. Pam, look at that. Turn your mic off.